Counselor one, Ms. Snape. Can you see if we have a floor for that?
Yes, we do have a floor for that.
The former president on that floor is being open. Come in, sign in and take a seat. Thank you. Let the record show that our council member John Fast will not be with us this evening. I'd like to call council member Kirk Raffield. You have the invitation for us.
Blessed be it. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to conduct business on behalf of our city, we ask for your favor and your blessings among those in our community. For we know that some are struggling and some are not. We ask that you touch each and every one of our lives and what we need. We ask for all of these blessings in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kirk. And Dr. Proctor, will you lead us in our place to the lead two?
Sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I have a great announcement to make to all of you. And that is, I want to introduce to you our new city manager, Sonya James. J-A-M-M-E-S, James. Sonya, if you will, please raise a hand and wave at these people because they're going to be sitting with all of you. And that also means that I'm going to slide in under as being the shortest-serving city manager in the history of the city of Jasper. So I'm almost going to make it to a ninety-day wonder, and thank you for that, Sonya. Council, you have in front of you our agenda, our published agenda. This time I entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Make the motion. We accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. And any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Counselor, you also have the approved minutes of the December the sixth, 2021 public hearing and regular council meeting and the December the twentieth, 2021 special call meeting. I entertain a motion at this time that we approve both of those minutes as were mailed out to you.
Motion to approve is presented.
In a second, please.
Second.
Motion, now a second, to approve. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Council, as mandated by our charter, we are charged with having an organizational meeting on the first Monday in every year. That turns out to be this particular meeting tonight. So for those of you who are in the audience, you will get to see us go through an organizational meeting. Now, counsel, I have given to you documents showing our current committee makeup. And at this point, I would love to have a motion to adopt that as presented with the exception of the mayor pro temp, which I am not allowed to present to you.
Mayor, I may swear in a newly elected on the agenda.
I was not going to swear, y'all did. But you're exactly right.
What do we first now?
So, and I would... At this time, I would call our city clerk, who is also charged by our charter to swear in each new elected member of our body. So we have Dr. Sonny Proctor and council member Ann Snape. If you would, please, I'll ask you to step around to the side over here.
Go ahead.
And...
Just get Ann out of here. She's not last. Did they go first?
And if you will take pictures, someone.
What, Shane?
You can hold the dial for your wife.
You're liable to hit me with it.
All right, barely.
Okay, so she can sit.
You don't want the bat even on you.
Okay, we'll do the oath of council member first. It's the longer of two.
That's right.
And repeat after me. I, and then state your name.
I, Ann Snape.
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm.
that I will well and truly perform the duties of council member of the city of Jasper.
I will well and truly perform the council members' and duties of the city of Jasper.
To the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities.
and will take only my lawful compensation.
And will only take my lawful compensation.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
or affirm
Affirm.
that I will faithfully perform the duties of council member of this city.
I will... Excuse me.
Faithfully.
faithfully perform the duties of the council member of the city.
And that I will support and defend
And I will support and defend
the charter thereof
The charter thereof.
as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
As well as the constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia.
and of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state or any political subdivision
Do this state or any political subdivision
or authority thereof
Or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office
I am not the holder of any office
of trust under the government of the United States.
Of trust under the government of the United States.
any other state
Any other state.
or any foreign state which I by the laws of the state of Georgia am prohibited from holding. That's a big one, sorry. Let's see. Or any foreign state
Or any foreign state.
which I by the laws of the state of Georgia
Which by the laws of the state of Georgia
and prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified
I am otherwise qualified.
to hold said office
To hold said office.
according to the constitution and laws of Georgia.
According to the constitution and laws of Georgia.
I have been a resident of the city of Jasper
I have been a resident of the city of Jasper
for the time required by the constitution
For the time required by the constitution.
and laws of this state
And the laws of this state.
and by the municipal charter.
And by the municipal charter.
I will perform the duties of my office
I will perform the duties of my office.
in the best interest of the city of Jasper.
In the best interest of the city of Jasper.
to do the best of my ability
To be the... to the best of my ability.
without fear
Without fear.
favor
Favor.
affection
Affection.
reward
Reward.
or expectation thereof.
Or expectations thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sworn to and subscribe before me this third day of January 2022. Now, the state of Georgia, that's a short one. I state your name.
I, Ann Snape.
a citizen of the city of Jasper
A citizen of the city of Jasper.
Higgins County, Georgia
Higgins County, Georgia.
and being an elected official of the city of Jasper, Georgia.
And being an elected official of the city of Jasper, Georgia.
and the recipient of public funds
And recipient of public funds.
for services rendered
For services rendered.
as such employee
As such employee.
do hereby solemnly swear
Do hereby solemnly swear
and affirm
And affirm
that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of Georgia.
To affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
He knows how to do the better ops.
Am I supposed to do it like that?
You don't have to.
Yeah.
I did though.
If you like that, I'll be there.
Um, okay. I state your name.
I, Folsom C. Proctor III.
Do swear or affirm
Do swear or affirm
that I will well and truly perform
That I will well and truly perform
the duties of council member of the city of Jasper.
The duties of council member of the city of Jasper.
to the best of my abilities
To the best of my abilities.
and will take only my lawful compensation.
And will take only my lawful compensation.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully perform the duties
That I will faithfully perform the duties
of council member
Of council member.
of this city
Of this city.
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will defend and support the charter thereof.
as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
As well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
and of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any accounted-for public money.
do this state or any political subdivision
Do this state or any political subdivision.
or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust
I am not the holder of any office of trust.
under the government of the United States
Under the government of the United States.
any other state
Any other state.
or any foreign state
Or any foreign state.
which I by the laws of the state of Georgia am prohibited from holding.
With...
with which
Which by the laws of the state of Georgia are...
I am...
are... I am prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold
I am otherwise qualified to hold
said office according to the constitution and laws
Said office according to the constitution and laws
of Georgia.
Of Georgia.
I have been a resident of the city of Jasper
I've been a resident of the city of Jasper.
for the time required by the constitution
For the time required by the constitution.
and laws of this state
And the laws of this state.
and by the municipal charter.
And by the municipal charter.
I will perform the duties of my office
I'll perform the duties of my office.
in the best interests of the city of Jasper.
In the best interests of the city of Jasper.
to the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
without fear
Without fear.
favor
Favor.
affection
Affection.
reward
Reward.
or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
(laughing) Sworn to and subscribe before me this third day of January 2022.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
State of Georgia, I believe, to you. State, and state your name.
I, Folsom C. Proctor III.
a citizen of the city of Jasper
A citizen of the city of Jasper.
Higgins County
Higgins County, Georgia.
and being an elected official of the city of Jasper, Georgia.
And being an elected official of the city of Jasper, Georgia.
and the recipient of public funds
And the recipient of public funds.
for services rendered
For services rendered.
as such employee
As such employee.
do hereby solemnly swear
Do hereby solemnly swear
and affirm
And affirm
that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of Georgia.
That I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sworn to and subscribe before me this third day of January 2022.
Thank you, counsel member Ms. Snape. Counselor Andrew Folsom Proctor III. I appreciate your service.
Thanks, sir.
Counsel, I'd be with you to review the approval of the 2022 department chair's and mayors' zones. And I would greatly appreciate counsel approval of this as is. I think that we've got a great amount of progress going on quite a few projects, and I would certainly hate to lose certain committee chairs, as a matter of fact, any one of them, on some of those projects that we're... we have ongoing. Now, that does not include the mayor pro temp. That will be a separate item. So I would entertain a motion that it is time to open for discussion.
Motion to approve as presented.
That motion to approve is presented. I have a second. Any discussion further by council?
I do believe, mayor and counsel, this is the best way to operate at this point in time for the city. As the mayor stated, the list of projects that we have ongoing, the stages that we're at, also mixed with the change of leadership at a certain position in the city as the executive came in. It's important for us to hold steady, and we're making wonderful progress, so thank you for considering.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Announce. Item C is election of a mayor pro temp. And according to our charter, that's not something that the mayor is allowed to bring to council. It is something that council has to decide all on their own. So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to open that for discussion.
This is for a two-year term?
This is for a two-year term. Now, let me tell you that your options are, if you don't do anything at all tonight as far as what we have, then in ten days, we have to present that back for other choices. And since we... no, I... Then we have just drafted Mr. Lenny for an additional year, whether he wants to. So...
But you should have a choice.
But you should have a choice. So the floor is open.
I'd like to nominate Kirk Raffield for mayor pro temp.
I'd like to second that, Mr. Mayor.
I have nomination Kirk Raffield for mayor pro temp, and I have a second. Any discussion on the nomination? Do we have any further nominations? All in favor of Kirk Raffield as mayor pro temp, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries, and we will put more duties on top of his craft here.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Jim Lenny for his many years of service as mayor pro temp before the so-called change began. I'd like to thank him for his service as interim city manager as we made those transitions. And I'd like to thank him for his service over the last two years as mayor pro temp. This organization would not be the same without him.
Thank you.
I appreciate your service.
Couldn't have done that, Jim, for sure. Thank you. Appreciate all the effort that he did during my tenure as city manager. I was able to rely heavily on his expertise.
He doesn't get off.
Shortest period, is that... I'm ahead of him as far as the length of a tenure, really, here. Thank you so much for everything you do for council, including, as Dr. Proctor has said, for your time on council as city manager and your time as mayor pro temp. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also congratulations, Mr. Raffield.
Thank you.
Item seven on business under eight, approval of resolution number 2021-016, adoption of the 2022 budget. I'm going to let Barrett bring this to us because this one might be sliding in just as it should.
Well, this was a technicality on my part.
Okay.
We approved the budget at December 20th meeting, but our charter requires it to be approved under resolution. And I did not have the resolution as part of the agenda packet. So this is just a approved resolution. Nothing's changed in the budget.
Counsel, I entertain most of this time. We approve resolution number 2021-016. Second, please.
Second.
Discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Well, that's the easiest way to pass a budget through.
Long time.
Well, it took a lot longer than that, but you're good. Item eight on new business. And consideration of ordinance number 2022-01, permanent polling place change for the city of Jasper, municipal elections, and we will ask our city attorney, David Siphon, to people break this to us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the council's package is a proposed ordinance that will set as the permanent polling place location for the city. Basically, the municipal courtroom located at 55 TG Level Street, Suite C, which is right beside the Jasper Police Department. In order to... or for the council to establish a permanent polling place location, you have to run a legal advertisement once a week, two weeks prior to the meeting in which you adopt a polling place location. We have run that legal notice, and so this is just to meet the technical requirements of the Georgia Election Code and to officially establish the polling place location. And so we need a motion to adopt the ordinance as proposed that will set the municipal polling places 55 TG Level Street, Suite C. And with that explanation, I'll submit it to the council and be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-21-01.
Second.
Motion, now a second, to adopt as proposed our permanent polling place at 55 TG Level Street. Any further discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor, David, is this the final action to establish this polling place?
It'll be the final action by the council then at the next election that we... that we'll have, which, you know, right now it'll be in 2023. We've got to put up some signage just to re-notify the voters of the city as to the permanent change in the location and voting place. So the ordinance authorizes the clerk and the deputy clerk and myself to take whatever actions we need to take, which, when I wrote that, I was thinking of signage. But that's the only item that we've got to do. If we have, you know, some type of special election prior to 2023, then we'll have to do the signage then. But that's the only remaining requirement that we have.
So we actually have some elections, school board elections this year and also county commission elections.
Well, this is just for the municipal polling place. That's the only polling place that y'all have control over. State elections, county elections would be done by either the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Election and Registration.
But we will be using that same facility for those elections, as far as you know?
As far as I know, both the county and state don't have any problem with us using that.
Yes, we just need to follow up a bit and make sure that...
Dan, did you have a...
No, that was... I was just a...
Okay. No, we definitely will need to follow up. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item D is consideration approval of 2022 Jasper Watershed Monitoring Proposal. And we'll ask our water director, David Hall, to bring this to us, please.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight, I'd like to bring before y'all a proposal to review our watershed monitoring plan that we have through term city engineer. See the MPDS permanent for the water pollution control plant for our annual watershed report for our watershed protection plan. This report also provides water quality and biological stream sampling and analysis required by the EDD. Term city engineers have solicited proposals from experienced firms to provide this service. Two proposals were received out of four solicitations. Two, the lobby of from VHB, I might want to say that name. This firm was acquired, has acquired CCR Environmental, who has been a reliable provider of service for the years past. Votes are attached as received. Staff is recommending the agreement with VHB for the contract total of $23,316, which is very close to what we had got approved for last year. So this basically, we have to have our streams monitored when they come into our town and our streams monitored whenever they're leaving our town to make sure we're keeping up with our sewer manholes, without having, you know, pump station problems. And also, too, it has to do with soil erosion also. It was monitored in that same part whenever they do their testing. They're testing to make sure that we're meeting our requirements for water quality pertaining to soil erosion and so on, so. So I would just like to ask for y'all to approve the contract with VHB, which the actual... Once they're done, they will submit their information to term city engineers, and they will submit a letter to EDD to keep us in compliance on our MPDS permit. And that's part of the $23,316.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve the 2022 Jasper Watershed Monitoring Proposal at cost of $23,316.
Salute.
And looks in the second. Discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So David, if I understand, they did the studies, generates a letter that goes to EDD. If there were any significant issues, we would begin an audit as I track?
Yes. Yes, and, you know, there was a couple of things that they found on monitoring. There's things that they've made us aware of, some soil erosion problems in a couple of areas that we have known that keeps us on the bottom and keeping that up also.
Thank you, sir.
Have you worked out with them before?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. It's the same kind. They acquired CCR.
Oh, okay.
We dealt with CCR all the way back when Jim was city manager. We dealt with them, so.
I just didn't recognize them, right?
Yeah, yeah. I can't say it, but, yeah.
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 It's okay. We'll just call VHB.
I'm going to Georgia now.
Right.
Pretty hell of a...
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration approval of 2022 Agreement for Tourism Development Services with the Higgins County Chamber of Commerce. Counsel, you have in your packet what shows... Let me think. I believe they get about 66 and two-thirds percent of our hotel motel tax that comes back to our city in the form of, hopefully, tourism. And you have in there how they disperse those funds. So this is nothing that we don't do every year. It's just time to do it this year. I entertain a motion to approve this for the Higgins County Chamber.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
Discussion by council members?
Would it spend those changes this year in our agreement that you're running for?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Counsel could continue with the Chamber of Commerce. Item D is consideration approval for the Legal Services Agreement for general legal services by city attorney for the city of Jasper by David R. Siphon with Public Security Oliver as mayor as city attorney and for mayor to execute the letter of contract for 2022. So I bring this to the council. Our city attorney is very well respected and does a great job for us. And I would, at this point in time, entertain a motion to approve his request for legal services contract.
Salute.
Yeah.
I have the motion, and I think I have a second. Any... Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
We appreciate you signing on for another year of our problems, David.
I'm truly working with you guys.
Thank you for the leadership. It's been tremendous.
Item E is consideration approval of municipal court judge service agreement between the City of Jasper and Judge Roberts' need for appointment, uh, for the year of, uh, January through December of 2022. And, uh, counsel, everything I hear from our court system says that he and his staff are doing an excellent job and I would entertain a motion to approve this contract for this company.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Item F is a part of that, uh, team is the, uh, approval of a municipal court prosecuting attorney service agreement between the City of Jasper and Joseph Hudson. Joseph has served us for the last two years and we, and has agreed to serve another year in the, uh, role of prosecuting attorney. I would entertain a motion to approve Joe Hudson for the January 1st through December 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. And last but certainly not least, that team is a consideration approval of, uh, our court public defender service agreement between the City of Jasper and Courtney Stewart for appointment for the January 1st through December 31st. And I would entertain a motion that we approve that contract, I thought so.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion by council?
Uh, just want to reference, it will be future use or consent agendas items such as this would be wonderful, help us on time.
I will have a discussion with our brand new city manager about the viability of consent agendas and we will come up with something in the first. May I keep that?
May I ask a question? Um, we had spoken about maybe having an addendum to Courtney's contract to name the, the protons that she has asked for.
That's covered my...
It is.
Who was it? Okay. I don't know if that was something that Siphon did or not. Yes.
Item A is consideration approval of the appointment of Tom Kleiner, who continues serving on the plane in his own condition. And I would entertain a motion that we, uh, approve Tom to continue serving on the PZ.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. And Tom is reappointed. Item I is consideration approval, the appointment of Harris Lowery to continue serving on the Downtown Development Authority. Harris served the remaining term for, uh, Ken Penn, who has come off of that and, uh, is now up for a full term and I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Harris Lowery to serve a term on his own on our Downtown Development Authority.
So moved.
Second, please. Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Welcome to the team, Mr. Lowery.
Thanks, sir.
Item J, consideration approval, the appointment of Frank Uvates to continue serving on the Jasper Housing Authority. Uh, counsel, I spoke with, uh, Dr. Dobson, Ms. Dobson, uh, said that, um, Frank had requested to, or agreed to continue serving. I've known him for quite some time in our community. He does a good job and I would entertain a motion that we approve him to serve another term on our housing authority.
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Item K, we're all with the appointments now and I'm looking, we're all glad to hear that, so this is a part of what we do each year, uh, as we are tasked to do so by, uh, our charge. Consideration approval to submit a grant application through FEMA's assistance to the firefighters program. I'm going to ask, uh, Kim Goldner, who does our grant writing for that particular project and does so many other things well for our city, so would you bring that to us, please, Miss Goldner?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. For council's consideration, I am requesting approval on behalf of our fire department to submit a grant application through FEMA's Assistance to Firefighters Program. This is a nationwide preparedness program and what it does is it's designed to fund critically needed life-saving equipment, particularly in our case when it is replacing obsolete, out-of-date, non-compliant equipment that we may have. Uh, Chief Roper and Assistant Chief Hedrick have identified several items that fall under FEMA's high priority status for funding and that we definitely have a need for. Twenty-three new SCBA units, that would be the most current addition of compliance and those come with two cylinders per unit. This new equipment would actually replace seventeen current units that we have that are 2007 edition and then six units that are 1992 edition. All of these are more than two cycles out of non-compliance, so, or out of compliance, rather. We would also ask for a Bauer Class II fill station and this is to refill our cylinders once we come back to the station and they are empty. Uh, this would significantly cut down on our current method of filling our cylinders using an air compressor that takes roughly eighteen minutes per cylinder and the new fill station would take two minutes per cylinder. So an extreme cost saving or time savings there. To go along with the fill station, we ask for a cascade system. This kind of works hand in hand. It complements the fill station by keeping four cylinders full, fully pressurized at all times. So that's four less cylinders that we have to work on. They're always ready on the go. And then the last thing that we plan to ask for is new Hearst vehicle extraction tools. Um, we currently have a set on engine number two. They are more than fifteen years old. They are not designed to work with new vehicle technology with the materials that are in newer vehicles and so it adds to the amount of time that frankly, we don't have when we're trying to get somebody out of a vehicle in case of fire or an accident that has injuries. The grand total for all of that is $271,923.68. Our local cost share or our matching portion that the city would actually have to come up with is just under five percent based on our jurisdiction size and that would be And so that would bring FEMA's funding to us if we were selected for this to $258,974.93. This application is actually due on the 21st of January. We had not thought that we were going to make the deadline originally or we would have presented this to you earlier, so my apologies, but we found out that we would. They extended the deadline and so we're ready to go with council's approval.
Counsel, this comes probably as close to a little greater than anything I've seen lately. I've entertained a motion at this time that, uh, that you approve this, uh...
I think this is a great opportunity and that we approve the grant application.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council?
This is, Mayor, yet another example of our investment in the public safety. Um, under this administration, we've had limits and bounds. I look forward to continuing, uh, advancement in both public safety departments.
I agree with that and I also want to point out that it's another investment in personnel.
Yes.
And I want to tell you, this lady is going to be a great addition to our city.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes, sir. Now, she's covered it better than I can.
I had a lot of help.
Yeah. Opposed? Same. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries.
Excellent.
Next, uh, next item is, uh, L to discuss and is consideration grant application to Firehouse Subs, Public Safety Foundation and Kim Goldner. We're going to ask you to bring this to us also.
Sure. So this is another great opportunity that our fire department has. This one is particularly exciting because there is no local cost share or matching funds requirement to it. So it is not nearly for enough, uh, as much money as the previous program. The maximum with Firehouse Subs is $50,000. Uh, they do this on a quarterly basis. The application portal will actually open on the 13th. It was going to be the sixth. I got an email this morning saying that they've delayed it by a week. So they accept the first 600 applications and once they have those, they go ahead and close the portals. So I'll be ready on the 13th to apply. Uh, what we are planning on asking for, what we think is going to make the biggest bang for a buck is we're going to ask for those same Hearst tools that we have identified in the FEMA program. Um, they're 41,000, roughly $42,000. If we were fortunate enough to get both grants, which I am hopeful for, then that would be an extra set of tools that we can put on engine number one. Those tools are not nearly as old as engine twos, but, um, they are aging and so we definitely could use them if we were to get both grant programs.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve this grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion?
Um, for council's knowledge, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason those tools are on two rather than one, council knows one's the newest engine we have. Two is designed for the highway, um, the way the doors open.
It was designed to spend its life on the 515. The older set of tools is actually on engine two. The nearest battery powered tools are on engine one and if we were able to get this grant, we actually have two sets of battery powered tools.
Awesome.
F plus the older ones. And then you do a set on engine two, Jack, and you take it out of service.
Thank you. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Item M is consideration approval to enter a fourteen day review for amendment to our employee personal handbook and I'm going to ask Beverly to explain this, uh, really quick amendment to our handbook.
Just a little bit of clarification. We've had some pushback from employees, um, about not getting to use or not getting the on-call hour if they are out sick or on vacation. Um, and it, it didn't specify in the handbook, so I just wanted to, you know, put that there that if, if, if they're on call, but yet they're sick or on vacation, they don't get the on-call hour, they get the, the leave that they ask for. And the other thing was, and it was a mistake on my part, on the, the table for the, um, per pay period hours equivalent of, of vacation leave, I left out the bi-weekly for forty-hour week employees. The police department has three or, yeah, three employees that are eight-hour a day, not twelve-hour, so, um, that takes care of that column. And then when we moved the wastewater treatment plant employees to bi-weekly, it struck the need for the weekly column, so let's just do that. But that's it for now and, and, and as we go forward, I want to, you know, make changes official because that's what took so long for us to come up with this thing because there were so many MOs here and there that we really couldn't locate. Um, so each time something, it can be officially clarified and we try to do that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve this fourteen day period where we will adjust some things that aren't...
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Committee reports. Uh, Development Committee, council member Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Rafferty.
We continue to work our, uh, evaluation of our, uh, presidential zoning. Uh, we did take a hiatus for, um, the holidays, but we'll resume that work with a consultant. Uh, probably next week, I guess. Made a lot of good, exciting progress, come up with some new ideas, but seems to be going very well.
And we also, thank you, Dr. Proctor, we also took the idea to allow our new city manager to become a part of that process and, and look for ideas that we might not have, so look forward to that happening this coming week also. Street and parks, council members Ann Snively, John Fest is out tonight.
All right. Um, we did have a meeting with Kim and discussed some, some grants that we might be able to qualify for for the grant, uh, for the parks, um, trying to move forward with the bathrooms downtown. Um, there's some stuff at Perode Park we want to bring up with the entire council when we go to our retreat on working with that and, um, Lee Newton's just, we're still trying to work on, we've got to do an engineering draw before we can do anything else with the lights pulled out in the air. So streets, uh, Adam Howard's working on some things at the dug front and some lights.
Okay. So, and Admin Committee, I'm going to ask you to double back up with Jim Linni on this and, um, what do y'all want to bring to us tonight?
Uh, I think there'll be some discussion in Executive Committee about, um, the hiring schedule. Uh, we'd be able to maybe discuss that after Executive Session. Other than that, Administrative Committee is proud to have a budget done and, uh...
Right. Job descriptions.
Job descriptions done, uh, so we'll be, right now, we're in good shape.
Thank you, Jim. Water and wastewater, council member, Dr. Sunny Proctor, you, you have the lead, Coach John's at.
Um, I think the biggest thing going on right now is our intake is having some issues and we're currently applying for the permits to address that, um, and still working toward, um, getting final approval for what we need for our wastewater treatment project. Those are the main things at this point now, sir.
Thank you, sir. Police and Fire Committee, council members Kirk Rafferty and Kim Linni.
Mayor, I'm excited and thankful for Kim and, and the chief's working hard on that, making great strides towards, uh, allowing other individuals down bus financially through grants, so that's phenomenal for our city. Uh, as far as public safety, uh, the PD and the fire, uh, both did as good a job as they've ever done in recent events that we've had in downtown. Jim, I believe you had an update on fire in reference to the facility?
The architect working on the construction drawings, uh, plans and construction drawings for the addition to the fire, uh, department has promised to have that done by the 31st of January. Um, we're going to try to hold him to that. I think tougher architects keep schedules right now for what's going on, so I will continue to push on, uh, on them to, to get it. I feel sure we can, at the same time, work on, uh, plans for us, uh, now these are destruction plans to, uh, do the bathroom facilities at the, uh, new parking area on the north side of Main Street.
And you want to bring out something about the fire, uh, fee schedule?
Yeah, uh, that's, part of our plan in the future is to, uh, and I had it in front of me a minute ago, I guess I still do, to try you. Uh, we're looking at working with the fire department, particularly in the fire marshal, in the, you know, fee schedule, uh, for services. I would think maybe we could have that available for, uh, council to review by the next meeting. That will certainly be our target.
We'll need to have a committee meeting and, um, speaking of that, before we bring that to, okay. All right, um, we're going to skip to development board tonight since, um, Waters is at, um, you know?
F. Financial.
Oh, um...
You're asking, oh, yeah, we're going to have financial before.
Okay, ready for finance?
I am ready.
All right, so I got the, finally got the budget...
All right, so I got the, finally got the budget amendments in today. And we ran some reports and things are looking really good. There are some large revenues that come in at the end of fiscal year that we go back. But right now, we're on the plus side of fund balance. We're not using any fund balance. There aren't any, really nothing out of, you know, out of kilter. Everything looks good. We've started the budget, I'm not budget, the audit, the auditor here. And we began going through and cleaning up some entries that occurred on conversion to make sure everything's proper. But that's not a, what did you say? It was not a business. It was just a reporting issue that maybe.
That's not where it should have.
And that should be, you know, after we, after the 60 days, we'll know more about what it looks like. But right now, it's looking really good.
Thank you, girl. Police report, Chief Pat Docter, if you would, please, from the office.
Good evening, here at council. For the month of December, the Jasper Police Department anchored 762 calls for 911. There were 55 vulnerable accidents. 146 citations were issued by the Jasper Police Department, 107 by the State Patrol. It was a grand total of 253 citations. And 44 warrants were issued by the Police Department. And then we had our miscellaneous calls that ranged from alarms to, we had to have one burglary investigated, 37 alarm calls and almost a dozen disorderly calls. Not too bad. There's a little uptick for November.
I was going to say not too, I have to be sober.
No, January's always a little. Thank you, John Newton.
Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And our fire chief, Steve Brooks, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to say I can take no responsibility for any of the grant stuff. Kim and Assistant Chief Hedrick have been working together daily for quite a while now. And I can't say you credit any of that. Fourth month of December, city's fire department responded to 122 emergencies. Those were one structured fire, one vehicle fire, no grass or brush, 14 auto accidents with injuries, 86 emergency medical responses and 20 others. At the end of the year, it was 1,563 calls. Fire inspection looked at three sets of plans and conducted 22 inspections. And also behind that, you gotta be hearing before you can look at it or if you want to read it, whatever you need it.
I'm telling you this.
Good evening.
Steve, how far, how much different was that from last year's?
Structure fires were down quite a bit from last year. Car wrecks were down. Medical calls were up, but they all aligned.
Right.
But all the other were right in line.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into executive session. And I will have a press release after executive session. So council, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
And then executive session. Council, entertain a motion. It's time to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Adjourned. Entertain a motion to go back into record session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
We going to take action on this?
Let's see. All we'd be doing would be to authorize a press release. So at this point, there's no other action other than authorizing a press release.
I believe we're going to authorize staff and legal to explore our options with regard to perro property or not.
I will give you that. Entertain a motion to authorize staff to explore our options as far as legality of perro property?
So moved.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. And entertain a motion to have a press release concerning personnel in city.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.